I'm not sure if Andrew is on the line, but if you are Andrew, would you mind re-sending Carla her link? She's having some trouble getting in.
Sure, I'll send it out.
Good evening, people. Tom Devon here, coming to you from the Colbert Administration Building for the Braintree Public Schools. The mayor's asked us to give him a few minutes so he can complete a task that's important. We'll be, I mean, we've got pretty much everyone here waiting for him. Thank you very much, greatly appreciate it.
Hello.
Good evening, people. I call to order the Monday, July 13th, 2020 school committee meeting. A few things beforehand. Let's see, we call to order our statement, okay. At this time, I'd like to address what we will be going back to, what we consider our normal protocol. What does that mean? It means we will be observing public comment at the end of our agenda. Now, it says we only, we've only allowed 10 minutes for that. We know that we're gonna have to allow, so that other people will be able to be heard. Let us all remember that this public comment, which is just that, it's not an open back and forth discussion. More than, this is our time to listen to you. This will be the situation in which your voice reaches directly to the school committee. With that being said, our first order of routine business will be approval of the minutes, our open session of June 29th, 2020. I'll entertain a motion to accept in a second.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? We'll go to roll call. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lamare?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Kukoris?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe? And the chair votes aye, it passes unanimously. Let's see. Communications and accommodations, do any people out there on the school committee have any accommodations in or communications? Okay, hearing none. Doctor, do you have any?
Nothing from us to see.
Okay, we'll be moving forward. Moving to superintendent and staff. Doctor, this is, we have our food service?
We do, so good evening, everybody. It's good to have you here with us tonight. What we wanted to do is give a chance for our director of school nutrition, Sarah Coughlin, to present to us the great work that she and her team have done since we closed school way back in March. And she can talk a little bit about what we did then, what we've, and what we plan to do and are doing this summer. So with that, I'm gonna give it over to Sarah.
Okay, so hi, everyone. I just have a little presentation that I put together to update you on what we've been doing, like Dr. Hackett said. So when school closed, I think it was March 12th, we started the following Monday, the 16th, with an emergency feeding program. And you can move on to the next slide. So we have, from the start, it had two meal distribution sites, one at Hollis Elementary School and one at Ross Elementary School. And those two sites were selected originally based on the US Census data, which demonstrates area eligibility for those schools. Which means that regardless of, so at this point in time, the USDA has approved a waiver allowing for all meals served to students to be free. But when this originally started, that was not the case. But because of their eligibility based on the census data, both Hollis and Ross allow, are able to serve free meals to all students for the summer feeding program, which is what we were basically operating under then and now. You can hit the next slide. So as of June 30th, we've served 165,824 meals. Obviously, that number has gone up because we are continuing to serve now. And these are just some pictures of the bags that we have ready, so you can see how many we have. And you can move on to the next slide. So this is just an overview of how many meals we've served each month. As you can see, our numbers significantly increased pretty much every month. In June, we had a little bit of a decrease, and that has, the numbers as of June have pretty much remained the same. So we're at about 480 to 570 meals per day at Hollis, and we're at about 400 meals per day at Ross currently. You can advance to the next slide. So as you can imagine, a lot of programs have put out grants for schools to take advantage of since school has closed. Braintree Public Schools has received several grants so far. And this is just a quick overview, so we received a $5,000 grant from Project Bread, which allowed us to put that $5,000 towards paying our employees who have been working through the COVID emergency feeding program. The Eels Foundation, which is based in Massachusetts, they awarded us a $7,500 grant, which could be used to purchase equipment for food preparation and cold storage. We just got awarded a grant from No Kid Hungry and Project Bread for $10,000, which again, can be used for purchasing equipment and that kind of thing. And we also just received a grant from, it's a school nutrition foundation, but they call it the Help Feed School Kids Now. And we were awarded $1,500 and two bag stealer machines, which I'll show you pictures of in the next slide. It doesn't sound that exciting, but it really is, because it makes things a lot faster. And finally, the New England Dairy Council awarded us, I put six there, but it's actually 12, we got six for each school, insulated bags for keeping foods cold. So these are an example of the bag stealers. They do exactly just that, they help you to seal bags, and it makes things a lot faster in the kitchen. So everyone is very excited about those. You can move on. And then these are our insulated containers. So the black ones, we purchased with money from the Eels Foundation grant. And we plan to use all of these during the school year as well, because they'll be very helpful for us. And then the green bags were awarded from the New England Dairy Council. You can move on to the next slide. This is just a little update, you may have heard about the USDA Farmers to Families Program. They, the USDA has awarded grants to grocery vendors. They've done meat, milk, produce, and our produce company was awarded a grant from them. So this allows them to buy fresh produce from farmers who were having to till over their crops. And instead, they give it to us to hand out for free. So we started out with 168 boxes of produce every week, but the demand is really high, so we increased it to 224 boxes of produce a week. The boxes weigh about 22 pounds, and they have a lot of really good stuff in them. So we've had people be, people are really excited about them, and we've run out every single week. So that's just another fun thing that we've been doing. And you can move on to the next slide. So this is just a list of our school nutrition workers who have been working through, since school has closed and into the summer. So I just wanted to thank them, I won't read through it all, but you can see their names there. And then on the last slide, if you advance, you can just see a picture of the team. On the left is the group over at Ross right now for our summer food service program. And the picture on the right is the group that's over at Hollis right now for the summer food service program. And I should say, before I wrap up, so, excuse me. We had originally planned to pilot a summer food service program at Hollis Elementary School this year, before any of this happened. And since we've already been doing this since March, we decided to just go ahead and continue with it at Hollis and Ross Elementary, so we could help families throughout the summer. I do anticipate the summer food service program continuing in the years to come. Typically, it operates a little bit differently, in that kids can come and eat at the school, but obviously, that's not the case this year. So we're looking forward to next year and hoping to have a more fun environment to be able to serve meals in. And that's it.
Great, thank you, Sarah. Do we have any comments or questions from the school committee?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, you go ahead, I'll go second.
Sorry to cut you off, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, no, no worries, no worries.
I just wanted to say thank you to Sarah for this presentation and for the work that you do, and thank you to all your staff. You guys were up and running pretty much immediately, and I think you provide one of the most important, if not the most important, service to our community. And I want to make sure that people understand, you know, these huge volumes that you've been doing and how important the work that you do is. So thank you for taking care of and feeding the kids in Braintree.
Thanks, Tom.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say that from the very beginning, you know, driving around when you first started in March, the dedication of staff and all of the hard work that went into this during the scariest months of this pandemic. And you were out there in the front lines, making sure that all of these children got meals. And it's just incredible what you were able to do and what the numbers are right now. And I just wanna, I wanna say thank you from, you know, from myself and from my staff and my office, because it certainly was not easy to go out in March and April especially, and be in the front lines when everyone was getting infected. I mean, we had five new cases today, but overall, we've had a number of days with zero new cases. So, you know, it was definitely a time in which many people would rather have been home. And I'm sure all of you would have as well, but you stood out there and you stood up for the kids and made sure that they received meals. So I just wanted to say thank you personally for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other comments or questions from the school committee?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is Kelly.
Go ahead, Kelly.
Hi, thank you. Yes, I too want to thank Sarah for the presentation and extend my gratitude to her and all the nutrition workers for the outstanding job of providing meals to the children of Braintree. I was lucky enough to have witnessed firsthand the amazing teamwork and dedication of combating all the food insecurities. And I'm happy to have helped and continue to help volunteering for school meals and fresh produce. So thank you so much, Sarah, and to your nutrition workers for all the hard work, we really appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly, and thank you for your help along with the Neighbor Brigade, you guys have been very helpful to us, I appreciate it.
Glad to help.
Did you have something? Mr. Chair?
By all means.
May I? Thank you. Sarah, like everyone, I want to reiterate our thanks. I think you have a wonderful team, and, you know, as everyone has said, I think you've done a, you know, an outstanding job of stepping up and taking care of our schoolchildren during this pandemic. So I want to thank you, and I just want to ask one question, because I, I think this USDA Farmers to Families Program is awesome. And, you know, obviously, getting very healthy type of foods out to families. So is there any way we can get more? Like, what is, is there a threshold, or I'm sure we could probably give more if we had more, right?
Yeah, so we definitely can, basically, what I've had to do so far is just ask the produce company. And as long as they, so they, they were the ones that are awarded a specific amount that they can spend to buy the boxes. But I do think that they've seen other school districts' participation go down. So I think that we would be able to get more. The only thing that's tricky about it is that, so for the past couple of weeks, we've been distributing, they come in on Wednesday and we give them out right away. Otherwise, we have to put them into our walk-in refrigerators, which is kind of a project. So the only thing that we are trying to balance right now is when we're getting them and when we're giving them out. But like I said last week, we got 224, and they were gone within like 25 minutes. So that was actually something that I was hoping to look into, is getting more boxes.
That's great, that's great, thank, yeah. When I heard you mention that, I thought there's definitely a demand, so that would be wonderful if we could get more. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Sarah, it's greatly appreciated what you and your group has been able to do and be, and help us through what can only be called strange times. I think Mr. Kukoris asked it, but now that we have a relationship with these farmers, is this something that when we come out of this someday, will we be able to, shall we say, keep that relationship that we've established with them?
So the produce that we're getting, the, we're using Costa fruit and produce to get the boxes. So I don't have direct contact with any of the sources of produce that they're getting it from right now. We typically participate in a produce buying collaborative, and they try to source things as locally as possible. However, obviously, that is difficult, living in Massachusetts and come January and February. But there are some grants available to help schools try to partner with more local farmers, like an actual farmer down the street from us. And that is something that I am hoping to look more into in the coming years. It just hasn't happened yet, but it's definitely something that we would like to do.
Excellent, thank you very much. Do we have another comment from the school committee?
This is Carla.
Yes, please, Carla.
Hi, Sarah, this is Carla Saros. Thank you again, like everyone has said, I can't tell you how much this means to the kids in Braintree. You guys are phenomenal on a daily basis, never mind during this pandemic. Question to you, are they set on the day, I know every Wednesday is the day that they do the produce, but is that the day that's set? Because I know people work on, you know, during the week or whatnot, is there play in it?
Yeah. So the reason that we have been doing it on Wednesdays is, again, because our delivery comes in on Wednesday. And like I said, the thing that's tricky is having to put all 224 boxes into the walk-in refrigerator. Unfortunately, they come on a pallet, and the pallet doesn't fit through the door to get into the fridge. So it's just a matter of managing the storage. So like if they came on Wednesday and we didn't give them out until the weekend, that would be tough storage-wise, which is why we've done it on Wednesdays. But we did, so last week, the delivery was late, and we didn't give them out until, I think, like 12:45. And we actually had more turnout than ever. So that was actually something that I was thinking for this coming week, was to do more of the afternoon. I don't know if more people, if it was like lunch break time, so they were able to step out of their house. But that seemed to work better, so if we can do it, we will.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Saros, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll be moving on. Again, thank you, Ms. Coughlin, greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Now, to item 4A, school building committee meeting, we had a meeting prior to this one with different representatives, and one of those was Mr. Mike Carroll, who is from Hill International. He's the OPM, or Owners Project Manager representative. The only one thing I can say is we are on time and we are on budget. But for a more detailed synopsis, Mr. Carroll, please. Thank you, Tom. Yeah, so right now, we're in the process of completing the last two phases of the project, which are Phase Two, which is the main academic wing that was being renovated, as well as Phase Four, which is the existing cafeteria and gymnasium areas. Phase Two, we received technical completion on and certificate of occupancy a couple of weeks ago, and we're working on certificate of occupancy for the final phase to happen this week. So we got the affidavits on that today. That means we will still have punch lists and still have some odds and ends that we have to get, but it's allowing us to move into the next phase, which is FFNE, that's Furniture Fixtures and Equipment. So we're starting to bring in teachers' desks, student desks, all the equipment, all the pots and pans for the kitchen, all that kind of stuff. So everything's coming in, and we're on target for a mid-August completion of all of that work, so that we'd be ready for the school to be able to start up on time and move forward with that. Excellent. Any other comments or questions from the school committee regarding East Project?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
By all means, Ms. Lamare.
Yeah. I got, I was contacted today by a parent who uses a wheelchair, and she was concerned about the lack of ADA compliance at East. She said that she noticed a good dozen exterior ADA violations. And, you know, I just told her I would mention this, and I'm happy to pass along her information to the chair or whoever, whoever needs to get this information so that they can communicate with her.
Yes, Ms. Cobb-Lamare, that's of the utmost importance. If you would forward that information to myself, I can also, you know, send it to Mr. Carroll here. And that's something we'll jump on right away.
Okay, perfect.
You have the person's name, address, and contact information?
I do.
We will contact them and be proactive about this.
Perfect, thanks so much.
Thank you, appreciate that. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Moving on, we move to B, which is the Policy and Education Subcommittee that met July 9th. I'll ask the chairman of that subcommittee, Ms. Dolan, to take it away.
Sure, thank you. So the first item on our agenda here is our second reading and/or adoption of the reaffirmation to commitment, of commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. So this is a resolution where we took a look at a boilerplate that was sent out by the Mass Association of School Committees and made some updates to it. But I wanted to open it up to the committee, if anyone has any comments that they would like to make in their time of reflection over this resolution.
Yes.
Do we have any comments or from the school committee on this?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is Kelly.
Please.
Thank you. Yes, I want to thank Jen and the Policy and Education Subcommittee for taking the first step in creating a resolution to affirm our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. I agree that annual diversity training for all staff and school committee members is essential. I'm also supportive of hiring efforts for people of color, women, minorities, so that our students are better represented. And I'm supportive of expanding the history curriculum to include more education and discussion on race. But I'm also hoping that we can expand this to include gender, transgender, religion, as inclusivity takes many forms. And in addition, I'd like to suggest that we could implement a more detailed plan with goals, commitments, deadlines, and accountability. And I would like to suggest some things, including creating a protocol for reporting racial violence and hate speech that's separate from our bullying policy. Further, I'd like to suggest that we create a transparent system for faculty, students, and parents to be able to report incidences of hate speech or prejudice. And according to disciplinary data, Black students have a disproportionately higher percentage rate of both in-school and out-of-school suspensions. So therefore, I was thinking that I'd like to suggest that we denounce racial profiling by faculty and utilize a restorative justice to repair the community. I would like to suggest that we also implement some type of monthly informal roundtable discussions that are open to students and faculty to discuss experiences related to race, ethnicity, gender, transgender, and religion, with the importance of discussing social justice. It would also be great to be able to invite guest speakers to come to student assemblies to discuss their experience. And I'm hopeful that these actions will make ourselves more accountable, and Braintree Public Schools and our community as a whole, a more welcoming place.
Great, thank you so much, Kelly. I definitely appreciate your input on this, and it's clear that you spent time thinking about it and, you know, thinking about how we can best move forward, and that's appreciated. So if you could send that to me via email, that would be great.
Sure.
That way, we can take that to our next Policy and Education Subcommittee meeting and work on this resolution a bit more. It's also my understanding that the school-based Diversity Steering Committee is going to be meeting as well. So it would be great to hear their thoughts on the content of the resolution as it stands today and get any input from them as we continue to flesh this out. And while I'm not necessarily sure what would go into the resolution versus some other plans that we'll be establishing, we can figure that out along the way, you know, what the best format is to take.
Great, sure.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please, George.
Thank you, thank you, thanks, Kelly, for your comments. I agree, I think there's, I think we've started to go down the road with a good resolution, but I think after looking at some other resolutions that I've seen and some other statements that I've seen, that we have an opportunity to make this not just words on paper, but seen, that we have an opportunity to make this not just words on paper, but words that will, you know, spur action. So I have some things that I would like to bring back to the Policy and Education Subcommittee that I would like to see if we can incorporate as well.
Okay, a point of parliamentary procedure on something like that. I do believe we don't take an action. We just word through the chair as it's reverted back to the Subcommittee for a more intense program. Ms. Lamarr, you brought up quite a few things that get many different notes. Please, I hope you had them written down so that we can divide them up and we can act on these things. And as as Mr. Kokor said, these are the actions that we that will be backing up our words going forward. Ms. Dolan, I believe you've got quite a bit of work, but you've done a wonderful job so far. I see you doing a great job on these things, too. Any other I believe that's reverted back. So or is it do we have to actually table that?
I would suggest you table it.
Okay, so I guess I'll take a motion to table the second reading of the, let's see, Committee Commitment to Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Resolution. Do I have said motion?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, Ms. Saros. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lamarr?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Kokoros?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe? Might be having a problem with connectivity. And the chair votes aye to revert this back to the Subcommittee. Thank you all for realizing that that was probably the best action at this point.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
By all means.
I voted aye. That was.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, if I could, please. Under the School Building Committee update, we had some conversation about the excess inventory list.
Oh.
We went back and forth on that, and we decided I believe that we're going to bring that to the committee tonight. They did have it as part of their packet that went home today. So we do need a vote of approval to send that inventory to excess so we can move forward with the moving of new equipment.
Okay, let me explain.
Mr. Yeah, Mr. Chair.
By all means.
No, go ahead. I was going to ask. I saw that, and I had some questions. So go ahead.
Ask them.
Well, why don't you go ahead and give us an update, and then I'll ask.
Forward that as we are renovating East Middle School and part of the budget, a line on that budget is some new desks and whatnot that help fill out the rooms. What that does do is it creates a surplus of of older desks, teachers' desks, laboratory desks and whatnot that are surplused. And we part of that contract is we have to surplus it correctly. And because they're an asset under our purview, we have to vote to surplus it.
Just for everyone's information, we did go through and pull out about 90 student desks and other pieces of furniture that were relatively new. They've been bought within the last few years by the school department. What we're talking about is equipment and desks that are actually really do have they've used. They've gone through their useful life. So the moving company will take it as part of the entire overall contract. We are limited. They they have a contract to to ship it out, and we can't change that. We did ask a question about whether or not we might be able to keep it in state if there were any school systems that might need it. And the answer to that was no. So we have a lot of nice pieces of generally student desks that will be going to the high school, actually, to replace older student desks at the high school. So just in case that comes from the information.
With that being said, we are surplusing some others that are going somewhere else. Mr. Carroll, could you chime in and tell us, you know, we know that we're surplusing. Do we know where they're going and how that fits in with the MSB and whatnot?
Yeah, so we've worked that through with Wakeville Movers. They're the company that is doing a lot of the moving forums. And what they're doing is they've got a system where they set up where they can put the surplus materials into shipping containers, and it can be sent overseas to other areas that need to have this type of equipment that they can't get in other ways. I believe ours is set up to go to Santa, to El Salvador.
Okay. Excellent. At least they'll be used by someone else.
It is. It's not being disposed of. It's being recycled.
Very happy to hear that. Okay, now we'll go back to our regular scheduled program where's the continuation of Ms. Dolan, the vice chairman of the Policy Committee, going forward with her item number two. Thank you, Ms. Dolan, for your benevolence. Excuse me, we have to take a vote. Actually, I need a motion to surplus.
So moved.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lamarr?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Kokoros?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. My apologies for that. But we will go back now to the continuation of Ms. Dolan's discussion from the, God, excuse me, from the Policy Subcommittee. Thank you, Ms. Dolan.
Okay, great. So item number two on our agenda is Discussion of School Committee Communication Protocols. And I'd like to invite Mr. Kokoros to speak on that topic for us.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. I appreciate it. We had a very good discussion about ways that we can be a little more visible as a school committee to the community with communication of agendas and minutes and other things that, as we heard a little bit at our last meeting, some folks were having challenges with. So we we had a good discussion. And thank you, Andrew, for for joining us and actually, you know, giving us some background on the capabilities and things that we have at our disposal. We had a good discussion of how we would work as a committee to not only work on incoming and outgoing communication, but also how we would inform the community about different things that the school committee is involved in. So we're still working on a couple of the sort of technical aspects of that. But certainly, you know, we want to make sure that we we communicate what's happening with the school committee in every manner possible so folks can join in as they as they are this evening, and they can also understand what, you know, what the school committee is working on and what, you know, what our charge is as a school committee, which is very different from the day-to-day administration.
Thank you, Mr. Kokoros. I think in some of our discussions, we've tried to figure out ways in which to better communicate to the people, you know, not just who we are, but what our policies are. So there's less guesswork, you know, in some of the things that we've had to deal with lately. There's been a bit of guesswork. So I guess this this communicational style is supposed to remove that guesswork so that therefore everyone knows exactly what we're doing, how we're doing it, getting back to people on emails, things such as that. I can't thank you enough and Ms. Dolan and Mr. Chafe as far as taking this on. It does it doesn't just help us as a school committee govern better. It helps us communicate to the very people that we're trying to help. So again, thank you very much for your time. It's greatly appreciated. Ms. Dolan, please go forth.
Was there anything else you wanted to add, Mr. Kokoros, before we move on?
No, I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, so more to come on that as we flesh out the particulars. So our next topic is the recommendation for structure and procedure for the mascot review process. So I'll give a very similar update to the one that I gave at the Policy and Education Subcommittee meeting last week, where, you know, we've certainly received a lot of communications about this topic, and we're very appreciative of that. You know, we certainly welcome people's input, and we're grateful to receive it. That certainly has not been the case in my tenure as a school committee member. So it's really exciting to see people getting involved and feeling passionate and doing the work to reach out to us and share that with us. So that's appreciated. Since we last discussed this, we did see that there was an article in the Ledger where the tribal leader spoke about his feelings about the mascot, and he mentioned that he would be requesting to meet with the mayor. So we feel it's appropriate to let that meeting happen before we fully establish and roll out the process that we will use to review the mascot. Out of respect for the mayor as the leader of our town, we want to make sure that, you know, and we're appreciative that he's in the loop of this conversation. And again, out of deference to his position, we'd like that meeting to take place before we move on. That said, I want to make sure people understand that we're not looking to drag this process out. All of us are eager to move it forward and get it resolved. But because it's such a hotly contested issue in our town, we're committed to also doing it right. So we're not necessarily going to proceed at a speed that I think some may like us to. But I also want to assure people that, you know, by no means are we looking to drag this on forever. So, you know, I welcome any comment from the mayor as to how, you know, his side of the equation is going. But I wanted to provide the update from the Policy and Education Subcommittee side as to how we see things moving from here. So if there are any questions from the committee, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I think that concludes the update from Policy and Education.
Mr. Chairman? Questions or comments from the school committee?
Mr. Chairman?
By all means, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dolan. Appreciate your work and your committee's work. I did speak with Farius Gray, who is a descendant of Chief Wamptuck. And we had a nice conversation. It took a couple of calls for us to actually get in touch with each other. We missed each other a few times. But we have decided to meet this week. We don't I don't have an exact date as of right now, but we are attempting to get together this week, and I look forward to it. And I I think that it's a great educational opportunity for me to learn a lot more about our indigenous people that created the town of Braintree. Chief Wamptuck, who created the deed to Braintree, Randolph, Holbrook, and Quincy. Without Chief Wamptuck, we would not have had a community. We would not have had the deed. So I think it's very important to have this discussion and to talk about, obviously, the situation we have right now, which is the mascot. And I just want you to know that I am going to do whatever I can to become educated on the issue and work with Farius Gray to come up with the best possible outcome and solution. But that meeting should take place this week. And I also want to say that, you know, I've received many, many emails as as you have as well. And I, you know, I have to say that Braintree Schools has done a great job because many of the students that have emailed, some that still are attending Braintree High School, but also many that have graduated that I'm very familiar with, whether I've coached them or my two sons have graduated with them. It's just really amazing to watch all of you to have grown up and to be at this point. We are engaged, involved. And I really wanted to say thank you for participating. And I'm really looking forward to my meeting with Farius Gray. And as I had said to him, I don't I want this to be a long-term, very strong relationship because his family is really a very, very significant part of the history of this town. And it's it's time that we recognize that in every way we can. So I will definitely be reporting back to you, Chairman, and you, Mr. Chairman of the school committee, as well as to conversations and and some of the recommendations that come out of those conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope you have a productive and a nice meeting between the both. You're a very good man to speak with. Any other comments or questions from the school committee? Hearing none. Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Dolan, for your report and all the wonderful work you and your fellow Subcommittee members put forth. We'll be moving on to, I believe, C, which is School Opening Steering Committee Update. Who do we receive that from, Dr.?
That would be from me, actually. So thank you, Mr. Chair. Just briefly wanted to talk a little bit about the fact that we have we have met is a the overarching steering committee met last Wednesday. We had a productive discussion about the challenges ahead of us. I do think that people on the on the committee were, I think at times, were all a little overwhelmed with how daunting this task is. We have been working internally here at Colbert to run through some different scenarios and obviously finalize the things up. We've already made quite a bit, quite a bit of movement on a few things. The working teams that are the four working teams that will be reporting to the steering committee will begin meeting hopefully this week. They have been people have been asked to volunteer for those. And they they will be getting into really the detail of the different areas from health and safety to facilities and operations, teaching and learning. And they will be coming back to the steering committee and giving their recommendations so that we can coordinate. I will say that the Commissioner of Education has did have a conference call last week on Thursday. There's still an awful lot of things that just aren't known. And one of the things I I am on the superhand of the serve for the state, and they're morphologically correct, saying we've got seven weeks left. We don't have a template. We don't know what's up with transportation. We don't know what the budget even looks like, which is, you know, obviously a significant portion of anything that we do. So there's there are so many things that are known that it really is making it difficult to try to get ahead of this. But I think that, you know, our approach is the right one in that we are trying to prepare for the worst and plan for the worst, but hope for the best and to be really flexible so that we can shift in and out of whatever it might be that comes our way. You know, first and foremost, safety is the most important consideration. We got to come out of this with a plan that that we feel students and staff are safe with. I think I don't think I know that we're all committed to that goal, regardless of what the guidance is from the state. I've been in contact with Mary Beth McGrath in Mayor's Office as the Director of Special Department of Health and Buildings and Facilities. I've been in contact with the mayor. You know, I know that the support is there from the town. And in the end, actually, a lot of this comes down to the Health Department saying to us, okay, your plan is good to go. So we know where they're at. They know where we're at, and we'll continue to do the work. So hopefully, we'll get more direction from the state. But our guideline, our timeline remains where we're hopefully get a final draft of a plan to the school committee for consideration in our, so that is where we're at.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions from the school committee?
Mr. Chair?
By all means, Ms. Cobb-Lamarr.
Hi. Thank you, Dr. Hackett. Just a quick question. I listened to Commissioner Riley and Dr. Nelson this morning on NPRWGBH about reopening schools. And, you know, some of their comments, you know, we're concerning. I'm concerned about feasibility if if these things that the guidelines are giving are possible. Well, what happens if we determine that these things aren't possible?
So the process allows for it. From our point of view, you know, they want three levels of planning. They want a full day, everyday return for all students. They want some hybrid model, and then they also want us to look at what would we do if we were full remote. And the commissioner, you know, is working, obviously, through the governor's office. And I know that there is a lot of push to to bring schools back up full. I do think that there's an awful lot of conversations that are happening now. It's a pretty fluid situation. You know, I think we would all share that goal as long as we can do it safely. You know, we've we have spent some time looking at our own facilities. We have some challenges to overcome. Space is an issue in some of our buildings. You know, we are committed to hopefully trying to get a segment of our of our population back full time, certainly our highest need population. And, you know, we're really trying to focus in on the elementary level to some point, some grade level point where we could see what we could do to try to bring them back full time. That would be one of the options that we'll explore. But it's not it's not going to be easy, right? So right now, how we are planning it is So right now, how we are planning it is, you know, we are staying right now with a six feet of physical distancing, which is what they're calling it, so it's social distancing, because we think it's not only the right thing to do at this point, given the fact that the science isn't really confirmed yet, but we also know that if we decided to go from six to three, that's an easier move for us to make than it would be to go from three to six. So we're, again, trying to plan for the tightest scenario, that, you know, kind of a worst-case scenario, and then be ready to adjust from there. So that, you know, that's the approach we're taking. In the end, the Health Department really is, the local Health Department really is in charge of saying, we think this is a safe plan and we don't think it's a safe plan. You know, and then we'll submit to the state, if they question it, they can, they're welcome to come and, and see what we've done and walk through our buildings and we can help them understand why we're recommending the option that we're recommending in the end.
Any other comments or questions from anyone from the school committee? Hearing none, we'll move on to our five, which is public comments. And like I said before, we're back to our normal protocol where we have public comment. It is just that every person will be allowed to, you know, put forth their comments. This is not an open discussion with, you know, between people that speak, but it is your turn to have us know that we're listening to what you have to say. So we will be taking an active listener position. I will make, we will make every effort to make sure that everyone is heard at least once. Is at the discretion of the Chair how much time people are given. We do have a policy on this. The policy dictates that every person gets three minutes. Well, if anyone's been paying attention, I tend to give people more than three minutes because people will be nervous and whatnot and I want everyone to be heard. I do ask that everyone be nice and be respectful. No matter what a person says, their freedom of speech will be observed here. We, our goal is to become a better version of ourselves. What I will ask though, and we have to have this, is a person that speaks has to give their name and their address. Now normally, if we were doing this face-up, they'd put their phone number too. I don't believe that helps us, so I'll be asking each person to please give your name and your address and then speak. Clearly you'll have more than three minutes, but I've got to be leery of the fact I want everyone to be able to speak. Okay. We're not going to be responding, we're here to actively listen to you. So first hand up, I believe.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
By all means, Mr. Kokoros.
Can we, can you just explain, because there may be some new folks on, on the line, the process that they need to press the raise hand button?
Well, okay, there is a raise the hand button, you pray, you raise that, we see it up on our screen here, we call upon you. You come forth, you state your name and your address, and then you, you make your comment. Our first person, I believe, is Ms. Sophia.
Yes, hello.
Hi.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, excellent.
So, hi, my name is Sophia, my address is 79 One For Bath and I live in the Highlands.
Last name, please?
Berard Nelly.
Okay.
Spell that.
Yes, I, we have it there, it's a formality, we have to do it, but this is.
Yeah, no.
So, please.
I have a comment regarding the decision about how to go about the mascot change. First, I want to thank Mayor Kokoros for talking about how he's going to meet with Farius Gray and he's looking forward to the conversation. I think that that is a necessary part of this process. However, I feel that it is wrong to solely base the process of this decision on this meeting. It is not Farius Gray's job to make this change. He has spoken out on the record multiple times of how he deems our town mascot as offensive. It's our job to educate ourselves on these previous statements and proactively make these changes as a community. It's our job to amplify the voices with these statements who have already spoken and I think by doing this, it's a signal to the Braintree community that we are truly committing into the diverse and inclusive learning environment that was previously stated in this meeting. That's all I have to say.
Done, meet me?
Thank you.
Sophia, thank you very much for your comments, greatly appreciated. We'll be moving on to the next speaker. Please, name and address, please. Hello?
Hello?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't sure if it was my turn. I just wanted to say that actually I heard good things tonight and I'm happy about the direction that we're going. It seems to me that you guys are all listening and that's basically what the majority of us here wanted to see. So I'm very confident that we are going to move to a good direction and just clear up some of the things that was in that reinformation draft. So I'm confident I'm good in the direction that it's going and I just want to say, you know, good job for Kelly. Kelly, I think she did great tonight and I, I like what I'm saying, I'm seeing and that's it.
Thank you very much for your comments, they're greatly appreciated and we hope to be able to live them on. Next call will be Mr. John Cass, please, name and address.
John Cass, 1834 Washington Street. So I've got two comments. First is about the opening of the schools. I just want to make sure that there is an option for parents and students who don't want to return to the school and want to be remote until there's a vaccine. And I just want to urge the committee to work towards that option for people, as well as, of course, the teachers who don't feel as if they can return as well. The second thing on the mascot, I would certainly support the removal of the current mascot and coming up with another mascot. I think it's not just an issue for the history, but also I think for current students as well. I think it's a poor environment and I don't want to see that continue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cass, your comments are greatly appreciated, we'll be looking into them. Our next person, I believe, is Ms. Cruz. Yes, Ms. Cruz?
Yes, Joan Marie Cruz, 170 Brewster Ave. I just wanted to comment on the school options in the fall. We received a survey a little while back and I was a little concerned because the survey didn't, you, you described that there are going to be three plans that you have to present and the survey, in my opinion, only seemed to reflect just the full-time going back to school or deciding to do remote. There was no option to say that you were considering or were for the hybrid option. So it was very difficult to respond to that survey accurately if you were not one of those two categories or so it felt to me. So I just hope that in future surveys, because when I attended a past School Committee meeting, you had mentioned that there would be several surveys throughout the process and I just hope that you'll take that into consideration for future surveys. And that's, that's my comment.
Thank you. We, yes, the first survey was really just an initial survey to get a sense for how many parents are planning on coming back so we can get an idea, initial idea. We will be sending, as we promised, more surveys out as we, in the coming weeks.
Okay, do we have any other hands raised? Not seeing any. Okay, well, first of all, to the people that commented this evening, thank you very much. We've become better when we have people that are helping us become better, a better version of ourselves. And we look forward to not just answering those questions or actually taking up some of the ideas we've been given, but reporting back to what the actions will be to the words that we've heard. Again, thank you very much for your patience, it helps us greatly. Moving on, I believe we're to the point where I will accept a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb Lemay?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Kokoros?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you, everyone, we'll see you in the next one.
Thank you, good night. Good night, everyone.